And we are recording. Annette, you can take us away.
Annette, you're on mute. It's probably better that way. Who's on the phone? Just curious. Or a community member?
That's Shabazz, who just was talking. I think he has an audio connection from his phone, but a video connection from a computer.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to call to order the... Oh, wait, do you want me to read that first or call to order first?
You can just call it to order.
Okay, so I'd like to call the Tuesday, October 6, 2020 Planning Commission meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's have someone else do it this time. About Trish.
Okay, I don't have a flag, but...
And everybody, please mute yourself, and let's let Trish do this so that we're not all talking over each other.
All right, here we go. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, very nicely done. Do I need to read that statement in here, Nick?
No, I think it's okay not to read that into the...
Okay, perfect. Okay, so now we are on item two, Audience Comments, for items that aren't on the agenda.
So, I guess the comment we have, my name is Shabazz Nafti, and my wife lives in Nafti. We live on 719 Sydney Avenue. We also own the lot next door to us, 807 Sydney. And the comments we have for the board is, "Our two properties at 807 and 719 Sydney Avenue were listed to be zoned commercial. Right now, it's residential mixed residential use, residential mixed use zone." And so, we sent a letter a while back and requested, when we received the request for comments, and we said, "No, we don't want our properties to be commercially zoned because we want to build our dream homes in here, nor did it be requested for the zoning change for our properties." And it seemed like if you look at that zoning map, our properties, all the way on the other side, on the east side of the Sydney, on the west side of Sydney, is all commercial courthouse and everything else. They only bumped out into our two properties off Sydney on the west side. They only included our properties in there. First of all, we were asking why they selected our properties, and now, we really want them to be removed from the zoning change because we didn't request for it. And so, we sent a letter, as Carrie mentioned, we sent a letter to Planning Commission and City Council members and presented that city council meeting just about three weeks ago, and we brought it to their attention. And so, really, our request is, we don't want the zoning for our properties to be changed because we want to build our dream home on 807 Sydney. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. So, you're gonna call Nick tomorrow?
Yeah, and I can give a quick response to this because I've been looking at the address and the zoning map while we're on the call, and since there's only one citizen here tonight, I don't mind taking a moment to discuss this. But that property, so the notice that went out, I believe, was for the Comprehensive Plan designation, which was to change the property from residential to commercial in the Comprehensive Plan, and that's because other buildings on that block are being used as non-residential in association with the courthouse. I believe that the county owns one of the buildings at the corner there of, I think it's Sweeney or Taylor, I'm not sure. I can't see the map that clearly on my current screen. But I believe that property was given a zoning designation of business professional mixed use, which still allows the construction of houses. And so, go ahead, Carrie.
I'm sorry, as I recall, this one, we did, this was part of the cleanup set of properties in the 2020 Comp Plan Amendments, the ones that had Comp Plan designation and zoning designation that were inconsistent with each other. This one actually had neighborhood mixed-use zoning and then mixed density, medium density residential Comp Plan designation. And so, we made the Comp Plan designation of commercial to be consistent with the zoning.
Gotcha. So, anyway, for the commenter, if you want to call me tomorrow before the meeting, I gave you my phone number. I'm happy to talk to you about this and look at the zoning issues with you and make sure that you can still do what you want to do with the property. It's gonna take a little bit of work on our end to revise that, but I'm happy to discuss it with you tomorrow.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Oh, absolutely. We love what you guys are doing for City of Port Orchard, and we are thrilled to be part of this. And in fact, our daughter started medical school just about a month and a half ago, and she went off to New York and broke our heart. We are empty-nested again. And so, one of her wishes was, "Mom, Dad, I wish you guys don't ever move out of this neighborhood because once I become a medical doctor, I want to come back to Port Orchard and practice in here." So, she is all jazzed up to come back here and serve the community, as well as we are part of the community, and we want to be involved with things, and we want to make the community grow and all that stuff. So, this is really our home. I am in the Navy right now and served at Army Corps for 10 years and 15 years in the Navy. And so, I'm thrilled to be part of this community and being so close to the community that I work in and I live in and all that. And it's just home for us, for all of us. So, we really want to look at this community, not just as a place to just live for a couple of years and move on. We've been here since 2015, 2005, I'm sorry, 2005. We have owned 719 Sydney since 2005, and we bought the lot 807 Sydney just about four or five years ago for just that purpose, because we decided this is our home and we want to be part of it.
Well, thank you. That's really nice.
Thanks.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to item number three on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from the September 1 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Okay, I'll second it. This is Joe Morrison.
All right, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All right. So moving on to business item number four. A, it's the amendments to the POMC Chapter 20.26 Development Agreements, Public Hearing Review and Recommendation. Nick, do you want to share your screen?
Sure.
Or give me the ability to share my screen?
Yeah, I'll make you the host here.
Okay, can everyone see my screen, which has the agenda up on it right now?
No. Did you hit share yet?
Let's see. How's that?
Yes.
Everyone see that? Okay, great. Let me get down to where I should be. And it sounds like somebody has a lot of noise on their end, whatever that is. I think it sounds like the beach. It does, actually. Would that be great if we were there?
Dwayne, did you have a fan on?
I am guilty. I have a fan on. I'm sorry. I'm turning myself off.
Sorry, Sue Ann. So, just to go over the Development Agreements Amendment that you have before you, what staff and the city attorney have done is prepared some clarifications and some additional specificity for the Development Agreements chapter that we already have in Title 20. A development agreement is something that can be entered into between the city and an applicant who is proposing a development project. And what that does is it provides some flexibility in how the city can apply its development standards. There's a number of different things in terms of zoning, non-conformities, requirements for things like parks, road improvements, things of that nature. The idea is that if there's some flexibility provided to a developer, especially to a developer of a large project, when a very large project is coming in, I'm not going to say McCormick Woods, but something, usually on the scale of McCormick Woods. Let's say that we have park standards, you know, we have to have park impact fees, and we might require a totlot, but if we could get a park from a developer at that level of scale, we might actually be better off with the city coming up with a development agreement with a developer that would encourage the dedication of an actual park to the city and improvements in that park. The public might actually be better off getting a full-blown park dedication with equipment and with improvements in that park and access roads, things like that, than just getting the fees, which might take a long time for the city to be able to be able to actually get a park in place instead of just having the developer do it. So that's just one example of what a development agreement can be used for. That's only one of many things. But the idea of doing a development agreement is, for some flexibility in the standards, maybe giving them a little more height, a little more density, things like that, you end up with an overall additional public benefit. The public gets more than what they would have gotten if the developer had just been held to the strict letter of the zoning code or of other requirements in Title 20 for their development. So I can go through some of the things that are in the proposed changes to the Development Agreement that are being proposed, the Development Agreements chapter that are being proposed here so that you can just see what we are doing. One of the things that we've attempted to do is just to make it very clear that a development agreement should be processed with a permit type that it's being approved for. So let's say that McCormick Woods came in, or any other type of large development, and they wanted to do a subdivision. A subdivision is a permit type, and a development agreement is not, and that's one of the things we wanted to make very clear in this chapter, is a development agreement is an agreement. It is not a permit, and it's not subject to permit processing timelines, and it's not subject to the normal chain of review. It has to go here, it has to go there within a certain timeline, or, you know, it fails to meet the state requirements for processing. But it does need to be processed along with the same permits that are subject to timed review by the city. And so, we wanted to make it clear that we consolidate a development agreement wherever possible, whether that's a Type 1, 2, 3, or 4 project permit. And as you can see up here, it can be processed most likely with a preliminary plat. This is, which to me is most likely where you'd be using something like this, a development agreement. It can be with a shoreline substantial development permit, planned residential development. And then, we would always be trying to consolidate and process it at the same time for approval, and therefore, any appeal of a development agreement should also be appealed at the same time and pursuant to the requirements in the RCW because a development agreement is not a permit. So it is subject to the appeal requirements of the state statute. It's not, it's not under our own appeal requirements.
And Carrie, I should clarify that concerning the appeal, a development agreement can be a standalone legislative action that is not associated with a permit, or it can be consolidated with the underlying permit. And so, the appeal process for a development agreement depends on whether it is tied to a development permit or not. If it's tied to the development permit, the appeal of the development agreement goes with the development permit. If it's a legislative action where the council is just approving a standalone agreement, that does not follow the same appeal process as a permit. It just gets appealed to Superior Court and has different timelines and different legal standards that are considered by a judge in the event that there is an appeal.
Thank you. Okay, and as we're getting into 2026, you can see the amendments that are set forth in here, and I think these are primarily just, again, to make it more specific and to provide more clarity as to the purpose and intent of the development agreement and the items that can actually be included in a development agreement as provided in Title 20. Development standards that can be revised in a development agreement include project elements such as density, building size, the amount of payment of impact fees, other financial contributions, mitigation measures, design standards, these would include heights, setbacks, landscaping, and other development features, affordable housing requirements, parks and open space preservation, phasing, build-out or vesting periods, and any other development standard, any other development requirements or procedures that are deemed appropriate by the city council. So, again, and again, you can see down here where we list all of the different sections now in Title 20 that are proposed to be subject to a development agreement potentially. If it's not listed in this list, you cannot include it in the development agreement.
And a couple of things that aren't listed in that list is stormwater because the courts have ruled that you can't amend the stormwater requirements. Those, the stormwater requirements are set by federal law and apply at the time that you actually go to build something. So you can't pass an agreement today that says that in 10 years you get to build to today's standards. So that's one of the things that's specifically excluded from that list. Also, process-type chapters of our code are not included in the list of things that can be amended by a development agreement. So these are almost all land use controls that limit the dimension or some form of the development. They don't include process really at all. The other thing I should mention about this section, if you can go back to the top, Carrie, is that...
Top of the, as the beginning?
This section, next page up, there you go. So originally, this section said that a development agreement would be on a standard form approved in advance by the city attorney. And so, a few city attorneys ago, that attorney had a template for development agreements, but subsequent attorneys have all said, "Well, I don't have a template for this. Every development agreement takes a different form." And so, they wanted to delete that there's one standard form for a development agreement because these things really can look very different from one another depending on what you're trying to accomplish.
So, is number one, when you go back up there, is number one and that cross-out, was that all we had before, and then all the new underlined, that all that is brand-new?
Yes, correct. And I'll add that there's two, there's two development agreements that we've had discussions with various parties on, and both, both parties have said, "You need to explicitly tell us that we can amend certain sections of code," and they wanted us to just say that you can amend all of Title 20, but because there's some things in Title 20 that we don't want amended, we went through section by section to identify those that we really felt like, we felt that we were comfortable allowing amendments to, and those that we were not are specifically excluded.
So now that this matters or not, it's just, I just want to know. So, you guys write this, we look at it, we move it on to council, council adopts it. Is there any time that the city attorney looks at this, or do they help write it?
They helped write it. So, our city attorney, actually, our city attorney, Charlotte Archer, is the one who helped draft this, but we also consulted with, we have a land use attorney who helps specifically with certain issues for the city. And so, those two attorneys worked together with staff, and we had some back and forth on what each attorney thought was needed and came to a recommendation here.
Okay, thank you.
So, the other sections here that Carrie has on the screen, it talks about, Carrie, can you scroll back up? Nope, back down. Just go to the bottom of the list of code sections.
Okay.
So, it explicitly says that the city council has to determine that the requested modifications are necessary to provide flexibility and achieve public benefits and provide superior outcomes than those that would result from strict compliance of the applicable development standards. That's under subsection D. So, there are criteria. It's not, there isn't a blank check for amending these sections. The council has to find that the public is coming out ahead as a result of the agreement that is being entered into.
Right, and I think E is also important because this is saying that if you do have an approved variation to a development standard that's approved through a development agreement, that means you don't have to go through any further change such as a rezone or to get a variance or anything else. If you get an approval to a change from a development standard through a development agreement, that's it. That's the one process you have to go through.
I may have missed something. Who's actually being, who's responsible for making the agreement with the city?
The developer would propose an agreement to the city.
And who in the city makes the decision?
The city council.
Okay.
So, staff would typically negotiate with the developer, and it would be the city attorney and the developer's attorney that would be saying, "This is my issue. This is how I would like to propose a development agreement to address this challenge that we have with whatever project we're trying to bring forward." And here are all the benefits to the city of taking this action. And sometimes, it's just inherent benefits of the project, but other times, they're going to make a proposal that says, "You know, if you allow us to do this, we're gonna help build a water reservoir or some other type of improvement to the city's infrastructure, or make road improvements or park improvements." And so, every development agreement is different depending on the consideration that is changing hands. And obviously, in an agreement, the city has to receive something, and the developer has to receive something, and we have to make a determination that the public is getting more benefit than they are giving in the agreement in order to reach one of these agreements.
Okay.
And...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I was just gonna, I can, I've got a list of, I kind of made an outline of the changes here. One of the things that was not clear in the previous Development Agreement chapter was how do you pay the city to enter into an agreement? And obviously, when you're negotiating with attorneys, the bills rack up pretty quickly. And so, originally, we had a system where there would be a deposit, a $1,000 payment to start the agreement process, but it didn't really resolve how you would settle the total costs. And so, now we've added a term that says, "The agreement itself, or the full cost of drafting and processing the agreement shall be reimbursed by the owner prior to city council action on the agreement." So in order for the city council to actually vote to approve this, the developer actually has to pay the attorney's fees and all the fees associated with preparing the agreement because they can take months to draft and involve substantial legal costs to the city. And part of the thing that is driving the need for this ordinance is that we, when we did annexations about 10 years ago, we annexed projects in the Bethel Corridor, and we annexed McCormick Woods. There are multiple development agreements that we inherited and assumed the position of Kitsap County when those projects came into the city. And so, we, some of those agreements need to be modified because they include provisions that refer to county codes or county processes. And our current chapter does not allow, it said that, it said that we could modify an agreement, but it didn't give us the permission to extend an agreement if we want to add five years. If the developer says, "Hey, we will do X, Y, and Z for the city. If you will extend the term of this agreement by five more years to give us time to complete our project." And so, part of what we're doing here is outlining the term of a possible agreement as well as providing for extensions of the agreement and the criteria that have to be met in order to extend a development agreement. So, the Application Requirements chapter, as with all of our permit types, we in our code list all of the criteria for submitting a complete application because we don't proceed with reviewing anything until we have all the materials we need to make a decision. And so, we have just modified the list of materials needed for a complete application here that include giving us the mailing envelopes for people that live within proximity of a project and also a list of properties that need to receive notices as a result of the proposed development agreement.
With that piece right there, though, do you double-check to make sure everybody, are you gonna double-check to make sure everybody is on their list?
Yes, our clerks run the analysis in our system, and will verify that the labels that have been provided are accurate.
Okay.
So, and with any mailing that we do, we do an affidavit of mailing. So the clerk in our department, who actually turns these into the post office, signs the affidavit swearing that they have completed the public notice as required by code and attaches the mailing list of everyone who received a letter to that affidavit.
Okay, thanks.
So after the the section on what is included in the complete application, the Permit Procedures and Appeals chapter, one of the things that is complicated about a development agreement is, as we mentioned, if it's associated with a permit, like a subdivision, that subdivision goes to the hearing examiner. And in those cases, our intent is for the hearing examiner to hold the public hearing on both the subdivision and the development agreement. However, there are also times when development agreements are purely legislative actions because they are not tied to a permit. And in those cases, the, what the code currently says about a legislative proposal, like a change to the development regulations, is that the Planning Commission holds the public hearing on those issues. However, because a contract, what we're talking about is a contract between the city and a developer, and due to the discretionary nature of a legislative development agreement, this section clarifies that the city council is the one actually holding the public hearing because I think it's important for them to hear directly from any parties or any aggrieved persons when they're considering on whether to approve or deny a development agreement. So, depending on whether the development agreement is combined with a permit or legislative, the process varies pursuant to the changes that are now proposed. Along, and I kind of mentioned this earlier, but the, actually, can you go down to section four, Carrie? So, the appeals process I mentioned, it's somewhat complicated because there are multiple types of permits in the city. And if you have a subdivision application that is combined with a development agreement, the development agreement appeal is tied to the subdivision and goes to Superior Court under the Land Use Petition Act. However, if you have a shoreline permit and there is a development agreement associated with the shoreline permit, that appeal actually goes to the shoreline hearings board. And if you just have a purely legislative action, that appeal is not processed under the Land Use Petition Act, but does go to Superior Court. It just has different timelines and standards of legal review. And so, the section here talks about modifications of development agreements being consolidated with an application as being appealed pursuant to Chapter 3670 CRCW, which is the Land Use Petition Act. And then, these last two sections are really brief, but our attorney wanted to bolster the language, highlighting that these are entirely discretionary acts by the city council. And so, there's no, if somebody submits an application for a development agreement, if somebody submits an application for a development agreement, there is no obligation on the part of the city to approve one. Likewise, they wanted to clarify and and you know, part of the problem from some of the things we inherited from the county is we didn't see clear legal authority for some of the things that the county chose to do. And so we want to be clear that the that nothing in this chapter is intended to authorize the city to do something that is inconsistent with state law when it comes to fees or mitigation. Because we do, you know, we have agreements that have been entered into 10 or 15 years ago that we're we're stuck with from the county, but we do not want to enter into new agreements that have fees without clear legal authority or at least references to the statutes that authorize those fees. So that that's a summary of the proposed ordinance. And I believe tonight we've scheduled this for a public hearing and we have notified the the parties who are interested in this ordinance of the opportunity to testify. And it looks like they have not chosen to attend tonight's meeting, but we have been consulting with with other parties and and I think all of them are satisfied with the draft code that we've prepared.
Can we go back just real quick and and how you said that this is not going to come to the planning commission? Is this going to go straight to the council?
The development, the the development agreement itself would go straight to the council. Except when it's tied to a hearing examiner action, in which case the hearing examiner would hold the public hearing on the subdivision at the same time they hold the public hearing on the development agreement. And then the hearing examiner would make a recommendation on the development agreement, but issue the decision on the subdivision.
You had stated, though, that you wanted it to skip to the city council and bypass us because you wanted them to hear, I guess, like the whole story. But doesn't that happen anyway? I mean, like last week when we, or last month when we had a public hearing, you know, all the people there that testified, don't they, especially if they had a a dog in the race, wouldn't they go to the city council also? It's okay that it's not coming to us. I just don't understand why.
So I think that there's a couple of reasons. First of all, the when, when there is a subdivision involved, you can only have one open record hearing on a subdivision. And so it's important that the the subdivision hearing take place at the same time as the development agreement discussion because the two pieces are moving together. So that's why that goes to the hearing examiner and not to the city council or the planning commission. Our code currently says the development agreement goes to the planning commission, but the subdivision goes to the hearing examiner and the hearing examiner and the planning commission are not able to communicate with one another in in terms of looking at the decision comprehensively. So it's important for those two to move together. Concerning a legislative development agreement, it's similar to the hearing examiner issue in that you don't want to have more than one open record hearing on the topic. And so if something was controversial, the city council would have to go back and watch the tape of the planning commission to see the testimony, if they actually want to hear the testimony. Otherwise, they're just hearing from staff that on this date, the planning commission held a public hearing and that comments were received and the planning commission voted seven to one to to recommend approval or whatever the the recommendation might be. But they don't have the direct knowledge of the issues without doing a substantial dive into the planning commission record. The other issue is that the issues of budget and financial type decisions that involve payments, fees, budget, I think the city council, you know, that sort of creeps beyond the scope of the planning commission and in its capacity as an advisor for land use type actions. So it is possible that the scope of a development agreement is broader than just the issues that are typically handled by the planning commission. So there may be issues of tax incentives or or other provisions that they're receiving testimony on, and those may not be things that the planning commission is familiar with or is is really in the planning commission's wheelhouse. And so the idea is that you want to have one hearing and in this case, because development agreements can be so broad in terms of what is included, you, the idea is to have that at the city council directly.
Okay, all right, that makes sense.
The other reason too is that with with development agreements, there's always a risk of litigation. And so frequently, when when someone is threatening litigation or you're talking about those types of legal risks, there are specific carve outs where the city council can hold an executive session to discuss with city council, the the city attorney, the risks of entering into an agreement. The planning commission can't do that in the same way. And so if somebody from the public came and raised an issue with the planning commission, the planning commission can't go into the back room and talk to the attorney in the same way that the city council can. And so for that reason, it's important that that the the city council be the one who's actually conducting the hearing and listening to the public and responding to the public.
Okay, all right, thanks. Okay. Where are we? So I guess I will open the public hearing. And seeing nobody that wants to make a comment, I'll close the public hearing. Does anybody have any questions? For Nick or Carrie? Or comments?
And we we would be seeking a motion to recommend approval to the city council of the ordinance revising the development agreement chapter of the code.
And so just a clarifying question, you feel that this will give you greater flexibility to generate increased public good by being able to enter into these negotiations directly and have them work with the other developments in hearings?
Yes, and it's not just public good, it's also cleaning up the sins of the past to some degree. And so the the agreements we're currently negotiating are modifications and extensions to existing agreements. And so we need this authority in order to complete the negotiation of current issues. So this this provides the authority for the agreements that we are seeking to enter into in the not so distant future.
Thanks.
Anybody want to make a recommendation?
Nick, can you give us an example of one of those, of those agreements you're looking to enter into?
Um, rather than talking about ongoing negotiations, I can give you an example of a development agreement that exists today. So when Kitsap County did the master planning for McCormick Woods, there there were three areas. There's McCormick North, which is on the north side of Old Clifton. There's McCormick West, which is totally undeveloped to the west of the existing golf course housing development area. And then there's McCormick Woods itself. So one of the agreements that the county entered into was the development agreement for transportation and they passed that in two thousand and five. And so the county had written a plan at that time and looked at all of the impacts of the proposed McCormick the McCormick and how many trips were going to be generated from that development and identified ten or eleven projects throughout the city that were needed as a result of the McCormick Woods project. It identified the cost of those projects. And what the city said is that we're going to agree to allow this development to go forward, provided that these ten projects are are mitigated through a combination of building projects and paying fees to the county, which is now those fees are paid to the city. And so and they gave McCormick Woods a guarantee. They said, we're going to, this is going to be an agreement that's in place for twenty years to allow you time to build out the twenty five hundred homes at McCormick Woods because we know that you can't build twenty five hundred homes in a single year in Port Orchard. The market just can't absorb that much housing. So in that agreement, there was there was a a structure that the home builders paid fees to the city. And then McCormick, the the predecessor to day to today's McCormick Woods, Jim One was actually going to build a project for the city. They built the the road that goes in off of Glenwood into the backside of McCormick Woods. It was about a mile long road that was an extension of McCormick Woods Drive. And so the builders are paying a fee, but some of that money is going back to Jim One as a reimbursement for constructing that roadway. And so for a period of time, the the person who built that roadway is getting reimbursed. There's also a non-motorized fee for bicycle lanes and pedestrian improvements where we receive a small amount for every house that is built that is supposed to go to non-motorized improvements. And and that one agreement only dealt with transportation issues, but there are other agreements at McCormick Woods that that deal with other things. And so that was something that the county wanted to enter into back in two thousand and five to provide certainty to the developer so that they could come up with a plan on how to move the the entire McCormick Woods project forward. And then, of course, in two thousand eight, the economy really took a dive. And so everything that was supposed to happen in that agreement got set back by about ten years because of the recession. And so now we're we're coming up on on the what was envisioned to be the horizon of that agreement and we're we're behind schedule. And so there's a need to update things and you know, so that's that's one example of a development agreement and also the need for for possible changes to an agreement.
And the next question I would have is how far afield can these agreements go? I know one of the goals of a lot of the codes that we've gone through over the past couple of years was to bring things up to a certain standard and kind of make things a little more homogenous instead of this capstry of different types and styles and qualities of buildings. So how far, how much liberties do these agreements have to askew from those codes and that we've already put in place?
So I I think that you're not going to be able to relax a standard. You can, you can come up with an alternative method that is equivalent in terms of what it accomplishes. And so if we have a standard that says we want, trying to think of an example. If if we, if our design standards required, I don't know, like a certain roofing material or roofing style, I think our code talks about having a minimum of of a four twelve pitch roof. But if somebody wanted to come in and do something modern and maybe they wanted to do like a LEED certified type housing product that had solar panels on the roof, but the roofs are relatively flat. Our code doesn't explicitly allow that, but they're they're clearly trying to provide a higher caliber of housing based on the architecture. Maybe they're increasing the overall amount of windows on the house or or doing something different than what we typically see in Port Orchard that is certainly nicer but doesn't fit squarely in the design standards. And so we're getting all the benefits of green building and a more valuable, you know, house that generates additional tax revenue, but it doesn't fit squarely in the city's design standards. But it's it's really nice nonetheless.
So there's, these are not able to be used to unsterp our design standards in any way. It'll only enhance, not unsterp them?
Yeah, I think, well, design standards are, I mean, it's somewhat of a in the eye of the beholder type situation anyway, but theoretically, yes, it should be enhancing things, not detracting unless, unless the enhancement is something that you actually don't like out of your personal taste.
Anyway, to assure any abuse of this or just the context of it having to go through the city council to assure that it's not undoing a lot of our work.
Well, I think the fact that these are discretionary and that language in the agreement says the council is not obligated to enter into this agreement. And so as planning commissioners, you have standing as a member of the public to provide testimony on a proposed agreement. If the public comes out and says, we really don't like what is being proposed, the council has no obligation to enter into the agreement, or they can request changes to the agreement before they're willing to to vote on it. So I think the 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 safeguard really is that the council is not required to do this. And if if there's enough public outcry over something as being not desirable, they're they're in all likelihood going to say no to whatever's being proposed.
I'm good, thanks.
Anybody want to make a recommendation?
I move to recommend that the city council approve an ordinance adopting the proposed amendments to P O M C chapter twenty twenty six development agreements.
I'll go ahead and second it.
All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, thank you. Did we do, did we do A and B together? Or is that something different?
Housekeeping is a separate item.
Okay, good, okay. So we'll move on to B, twenty twenty, P O M C title twenty, housekeep amendments, public hearing, review and recommendation.
And this is the same thing that the planning commission sees every year, it seems. We, we in D C D track every year errors, inconsistencies, outdated information, conflicting information, omissions, things that we find in title twenty throughout the year of working with them. Generally, it's our planners who find these things and tell them to me that we need to correct. There's, these are always minor. These are not things that are substantive that would rise to the level where we need a public hearing to resolve them. And so we gather all of these corrections generally into one ordinance at the end of each year into what we call our housekeeping ordinance. And we've put them into a spreadsheet format. And then we combine them into one ordinance and we provide, we provide all of you with an explanatory document that does the red line format with an explanation of why we're making this change. Just you have it in front of you and you're not trying to just get it from the ordinance itself. And so I'm happy to go through each of them one by one, if you would like me to, or if there's just one or two that you wanted to focus on, I'm happy to go through that as well. And I think the easiest way for me to do it is as I'm scrolling down here, to go through the explanatory document if you want to go through any or or all of those. What would be your preference? Is, we should let you just walk through all of them?
Yes, unless there's like a ton of them. I don't have my I don't
It's actually, it's actually a lot fewer than last year.
Okay.
A good thing, yeah, okay. And these are, these are all in order of how they appear in title twenty. Twenty oh four zero six zero, the agenda process for comprehensive plan amendments. We noticed that this said that you have until five o'clock P M on January thirty first of each year to submit a comp plan amendment application. However, city offices all close at four thirty P M. So we needed to make a change to that. And we wanted to say that all comp plan amendment applications must be submitted to the planning department by four o'clock P M on January thirty first. That allows the applicant to come into the counter and submit their comp plan application package, have it reviewed by staff, have everything reviewed for for a counter complete application, have that done by the time that the office actually closes at four thirty. So that is what that correction is about. Number two, sign variance permits. We simply had that permit in the wrong column in our permit review type classifications table. It is actually a it is a type two permit, not a type one permit. We no longer have a comprehensive sign design permit, so we remove that from the type three column. We do have a master sign plan permit and we had left that out of the type one column and left it out entirely. So we've added that. So just an update to the type of permits that we have. Number three, clarifying who is entitled to receive a notice of decision on a project application. This was something that was suggested by our permit center manager. A notice of decision shall be provided to the applicant, to any person who submitted written comments on the application other than a signed petition. And we believe this, that that applies to someone who submitted a petition for annexation. To any person who testified at a hearing or to any person To any person who testified at a hearing or to any person who requested in writing a copy of the decision. So that just means that if you came up to me at a hearing and said, hey, I'd like a copy of the decision. I need to get that in writing from you, whether that's by email or you sent me a letter or however, but just that needs to be provided to our department in writing. And you will also see that in number four below. Same thing, just wanted to make the second section consistent here about the notice of public hearing. So if you requested a notice in writing about the application, get to get written in comments. You will get a notice of public hearing. Number five, we changed the chapter of. We changed the title of chapter twenty thirty seven to public and community space districts. For consistency with the comp plan map and to better reflect the land uses under this description. When we rewrote the zoning code a couple of years ago, this was retitled civic and open space districts. And this that is not actually consistent with the way that it is entitled in our comprehensive plans. So those those two need to be consistent. And so we just changed it back to the way that it was in the old zoning code and the way that it is in the current comp plan, just for consistency. Number six, by building type. For both of these, for lot dimensions in both in civic and institutional and in public facilities. This should not be in here, we don't know why it's in here, it doesn't belong there, it's gone. Number seven. We were looking at our downtown mixed use zone and we wanted to make sure that our downtown mixed use. Is protected basically from accessory uses that really are not consistent with the intended purpose of that zone. Which is to provide some general retail, professional office, tourist oriented retail. We don't want it to start turning into the a type of zone where you have landscaping businesses. Plumbing, outdoor storages, semi industrial uses that would start to require outdoor storage yards, things of that nature. And so we added some additional language to prevent outside storage and other undesirable unforcing uses and activities from becoming accessory uses in the D M U zone. Because we we had, we had lacked specificity in that code description that would prevent that from actually happening. So we just said that that the D M U zone doesn't doesn't allow maintenance, repair and service uses that are industrial in nature. Or that include outdoor storage of equipment or supplies, and we gave some examples of those. Both of what is allowed and what isn't allowed, just to be sure that we're continuing to protect the nature of that zone and what it was intended for.
Does that mean if the car lot moved off, one couldn't come back?
The car lot is not an accessory use and that's a primary use and it's actually zone commercial, it's it's not zone D M U. You're talking about the car lot downtown.
Yeah, so is something like then the roofing company? Is there any example of what's that you don't want down there right now?
The roofing. The roofing company is already a nonconforming use and so they're allowed to continue, but they can't, they can't expand. This is, this is really talking about accessory uses to. To professional office and commercial only.
Okay. Right, I suppose if. If you came in and you had Bob's plumbing and it was just your office, it's just where you did the billing and the payroll and things like that. Nothing prevents you from having your office downtown, but if you wanted to expand Bob's plumbing downtown and have your storage where you have the pipes and the heavy equipment and your trucks. That's what we don't want happening downtown as an expansion, as an accessory use in that zone. So we just want to make sure that doesn't happen, that needs to go into more of a of a heavier commercial type zone. Number eight. We just wanted to go ahead and correct the numbering, which was off in this section. And wanted to acknowledge that appeals did not need to be addressed in this section because they're already addressed in another section. Of the P O M C, so how to handle administrative appeals was removed from the section to correct redundancy. Number nine, we have a requirement in Title twenty that when the director, when Nick does director's interpretations of an unclear code interpret. Of an unclear section of code throughout any one calendar year, by the end of the year, we need to incorporate that formally into the code. And so this is the one that we have this year about subdivision design and street length. Nick did that in June of this year, and so we are just incorporating that. Nick did an interpretation of how the block length exceptions in our design standards for for street length. Should be granted and allows each of the exceptions that are provided in there to be granted independently of the others. Because it didn't actually say in the code as it was written, whether you could or couldn't do it that way. And so. What we did was he wanted to make it very clear. That there are exceptions for street length where significant topographic features, critical area features are present. And will be retained on parcels that are one half acre or larger in size to propose for development. If one, any one of the three options provided below are implemented within each block that exceeds eight hundred feet in face length or twenty four hundred feet in perimeter length. The street length standards in this section shall be considered met. And then you have these below. Below, it the the original statement just was not really clear. What type of property that could apply to, what restrictions could be on that property? And. How it could be met for any particular for any particular site. So we just wanted to provide more clarity and perhaps more restrictions. On where this could apply and incorporate the interpretation formally into code.
And and we had this issue because of a plat application that came in. And the developer and I had read it to be that. You had to do one of A, B and C, but one of my planners was looking at it and saying, it sounds to me like you have to do A and B. Or C, and so it was a situation of, you know, similar to, there was a Supreme Court decision a few years ago concerning an Oxford comma that resulted in a. A pretty substantial award to a a group of dairy truck drivers. So this, I think, just clear clarifies what we were intending originally.
Number ten, we just wanted to correct, the graphic did not go with the code language. As you can see here, the existing graphic seems to say that your port can be two feet from your lot line. Whereas the code language said it could be, it has to be three feet minimum, so we just corrected that graphic. In this section. We we didn't want to say, as this graphic implies, that storefront blocks, storefront block frontage standards. Have minimum fifteen foot height limits for all buildings. Because actually every building type has its own minimum height requirements. And so, ooh. Can everybody hear me still?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
We can hear you.
Okay, everybody, everybody, everybody and everything froze suddenly, so my apologies if that was me. So anyway, every every building type actually has its own height limits, height requirements. And so it was a mistake in this section to have a graphic that just said there was one. Minimum height for all types of buildings in this area. And so it, we took this out and we replaced it with this requirement that just said to refer to the building type. For your storefront storefront block frontage standard, you need to refer to the building type to see what your minimum height is. And we repeated that in the code. Number twelve, this is about drive through facilities and the internal roadway design for the drive through lane. We do not know why this is in here about to which a sign applies, we took that out. That was obviously left over from some other old code section. Number thirteen, we revised the SEPA notice requirement for non-project actions that don't require permit approval. Such as when we go through, such as when we redid the zoning code. When we changed the the entire zoning code and everybody in town got a new zoning designation. We couldn't really mail that out to every single person in town and we couldn't mail. The SEPA determination to every person in town. And so we we followed the the process of doing our SEPA determination by publishing a notice in the paper, by putting it online, by putting it out on Facebook. By following other non-specific notice methods that would get a wide distribution out, but were not specifically targeted to individuals. And these are allowed as alternative methods provided in the WAC. But we did not have this addressed in our city code. The only thing we had addressed in city code was how to get SEPA notice out for individual projects that are site specific, tied to a single piece of land. And so we wanted to make sure that we had a way to do this in our code that address non-project actions. And so we will now have it in our code that we give notice of a DNS or D or D S under SEPA in accordance with the requirements of the WAC. And basically in the WAC, it's just saying that you need to publish them in the paper. And give notice in in any other way in your community that seems relevant, feasible and appropriate to the circumstances involved. Number fourteen is we removed the stream buffer with language from the development standards table in the city's critical areas regulations. We had left this footnote in here. That was from an older version of the C A O and it's inconsistent with the current stream buffer requirements. So this just needed to come out because that was creating confusion, it was conflicting with the actual code language right above it. And so we just have removed that. And that's it, so I'm happy to talk about any of these in more detail if anyone has any questions.
And this one is also a public hearing, so we need to open a hearing and see if there's any testimony.
Okay, so I'd like to open the public hearing for twenty twenty P O M C Title twenty Housekeeping Amendments. Seeing that no one wishes to make a comment, I'm going to close the public hearing. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Nick or Carrie? About a recommendation to move it forward?
I'll go ahead and recommend it.
I'll go ahead and second it.
I'm sorry, who was that, please? Is that Joe?
Yeah, that's the second.
Oh, thank you.
I I think you need to state that as a motion.
So I think it goes back to.
And do we have a? The motion written up there?
The motion is on the screen.
I move to recommend that the city council approve the twenty twenty Title twenty Housekeeping Ordinance.
I will second it again.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I suppose.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to number five, administrative items, A, November twenty twenty Alternative Meeting Date.
So we wanted to talk about having an alternative meeting date for November because our regularly scheduled meeting falls on Election Day. And we thought that probably would not be the best. Date, both to meet in general and also to schedule public hearings. And we figured we would get some pushback from that and we probably would not get good attendance. So I had sent out a an email earlier last or last month asking for some opinions on various dates that were alternatives. November second. That's a Monday, Thursday, the fifth and Monday, the ninth were possibilities. I got several noes for Thursday, the twelfth, so that one's definitely off, I believe I got four noes back for the twelfth. So it looks like we're down to those three, the second, the fifth and the ninth. So if we are able to agree on a final for that one, we can go ahead and reschedule that now.
Any of them work for me?
Me too.
I can do either of them, but the second would be my preference.
Same. Hey, how about the second then?
I'm good with that.
Me too.
Hey.
That would be Monday, the second. And everybody's okay with six P M?
Yes.
Yes.
You bet.
Okay, Nick, are you all right with that? Okay, great, thank you, I will send out a reminder of that to everyone right after this meeting for the people who were not here tonight. And then we will meet on Monday, the second at six P M, thank you. Five five B was the laptops and surfaces for the planning commissioners, you probably also saw my email. I had sent out our our I T department is offering laptops or surfaces for our planning commissioners for use on working. On our assignments for the planning commission. And I only heard back from Mark that he was interested in it, everyone else I heard back from was not. But I think Nick wanted to talk a little bit more about some of the the possible benefits of of actually saying yes and having one of those for your P C meetings.
Right, so I know all of you have had to go through a public records training session. And so I wanted to remind you that when you're using a personal device, it's perfectly fine to view something. On like our our planning commission packet, if you pull it up on the city website, that isn't creating a public record. But if you want to actually go in and request a word document of a proposed code that we're working on and you want to mark it up or add notes. That type of thing, as soon as you save that on your computer locally, you have a city record on your personal device. And that's the situation that we are trying to avoid. So the the thought was that. Because we are now in this remote meeting world and it looks like we will be probably well into next year. We wanted to make sure that that, based on public records requirements, that all of you were comfortable using your own device. Versus having a city provided device to handle planning commission type business. That's not to say you can't go and view an email on your personal device to check if if somebody's contacted you. But in terms of actually opening any files that that would be saved locally on your device. A city device would prevent you from ending up with public records.
Nick, this is Stephanie, if we opt for one of these city laptops or surfaces, what are? What are the requirements that are required to take need sort of I T training through the city or? I mean, what if something happens, what if we drop one?
Um. Well, if if you drop a device and it breaks, it breaks. I I don't think that we're going to come after you for the cost of of the device. There's really, there's really no training per se. Other than you may, you may periodically get something that says you need to go through a twenty minute online class about how to identify phishing scams or something. Where your use of the device could result in in information getting on to the city's servers. But I'm not even sure that you would be fully connected in that way, so that's probably not even an issue. Really, you just are going to be assigned to sign in and and set your password. And then when you sign in, you can go to a browser, you can go to Outlook and check your planning commission email and you can use Zoom. To connect and if you if you happen to get a a word file from. Carrier I that has code language, you can go in and and edit in track changes mode or make comments and mark things up and save it locally on your on your device.
Okay, thank you.
And just so you know, these are not new devices, we have. A handful of surfaces that are, you know, three and four years old that we are upgrading, so. These are things that would probably otherwise be surplus, so it's not adding cost to the city day to have you to give you a device, but.
Is forgive me here, but what is a surface?
It's like the Microsoft, they make a Surface Laptop and a Surface Tablet, so they have a full keyboard.
Okay.
But they're they're portable, lightweight, good battery life.
Okay, so that. So they're one in the same with a laptop, it's just a brand name of.
Correct, Microsoft builds the device and so we have quite a few of those. We have a few other laptop models around as well that are a few years old, so I can't guarantee that it's a surface, but we have quite a few of those, so I think. That may be the option.
All right.
Anyway, you can just know offline if you would like one, but I just wanted to highlight the reason why. You got that email sort of out of the blue is our our clerk became concerned now that we're meeting online. meeting online, that if you are doing more on a computer, that there was a risk that you could be creating public records. And so, you know, if we ever get a public records request, what's going to happen is we're going to reach out to everyone and say, do you have any records that are responsive to this topic? And, you know, if you, if, if we ever got sued and a judge, you know, a judge could actually ask to see your personal device, and you would have to turn it over while there was some sort of discovery type action on, on public records on your, your personal computer. So that's, that's the potential risk, is that you would have to give up your device for a period of time.
All right, thanks for the explanation. I, I'll, I'll take one then.
Yeah, me too.
And I can't see everybody at once, so that was Trish.
Stephanie.
And Stephanie.
I'm not sure.
It was Sue Ann.
Yes.
Yeah, as for Trish, maybe, I don't know. I'll think about it.
Okay, anybody who wants one, just let me know, just email me. So Stephanie and Sue Ann to the list, along with Mark, and then just anyone else, just let me know, and we'll, we'll have them for a while, I think, and we'll just give them to you as you say yes.
I'll take one.
Okay. Thank you.
So we had one other announcement to make that wasn't on the agenda, but I wanted to make that real quick, and that is, at one of the recent meetings, we had some comments that citizens felt like they weren't getting notice of various things. Today, Carrie did mail you a complete list of everyone who got notice of that particular topic. And so the city has verified that, that we got things as far as the mailman. After that, we can't, we didn't deliver the mail, but we got them to the post office. So if somebody was on that list and didn't receive something, it's probably a mail delivery issue, maybe it was delivered to the wrong house, maybe it was mixed in with junk mail, we really don't know. But we are looking at our mailing process to make sure that we are maximizing, you know, the risk, or the, the possibility that something gets delivered. And currently, it's, you know, at, at City Hall, the mailman actually picks up our mail daily, and sometimes if, if we don't, if we miss the, the mailman, we will drive it to the post office, but we are looking at the, at all of our options for ensuring the most reliable form of delivery going forward.
Thanks for the responsiveness, Nick and Carrie, I appreciate it. I, I had talked with some of my neighbors, and, and they're on the list, so we'll, we'll keep an eye on it, thank you very much.
Thanks for bringing that back to our attention.
All right, does anybody have anything else they want to talk about or questions or? All right, I guess we're done, so I will adjourn the, what is the date, Tuesday, October 6, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting. Have a good night, everybody, see you next month.
Good night, everyone.
So you've got to stop the recording.